Two, so I'd like to call the meeting, uh, call the meeting to order. We're the Board of Selectmen meeting for Monday, July 21st. All rise for the President of the Leagues.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, um, item number three. You know, no update for this evening, really nothing special to report. I think we talked about it in our last meeting, that was our morning meeting, about all the hard work and effort that went into for the July 4th holiday. Just wanted once again to give our athletes, the town staff, our volunteer fire, police department, you know, all the public works, everybody that made it such a success within all three events that happened in town. Any other liaison reports or selectman comments? No? Bruce? No?
It's a summer.
Yeah, okay, great. Moving on to citizens' comments. Jeannie, do we have any hands raised?
No, you do not.
Okay, it'll be an opportunity at the end of the meeting as well. Moving on to, um, the consent agenda, so I'm gonna make a motion to approve the consent agenda with two changes to it. Change item number E, under number appointments, E, number six, replace Heather Crawford with the name Terry Wolf Vanderdolden, and then add an item E8, appoint David Clark as Chair of the Tree Advisory Committee. That, and moving the entire consent agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, any further comments or questions?
Uh, just, just a heads up, I'm gonna abstain. Um, I don't need it broken out. I don't object to anything but the, the tree advisory things. I'm just not in support of this in general, so all of the other consent stuff is great, but I'm gonna abstain from this.
Okay, all right, all in favor, say aye.
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 One abstention, and it passes. All right, thank you. Moving on to item number seven, as we talked about, we addressed in the consent agenda, it just, it was accidentally put as separate. Item number eight is an update on our proposed celebration for the Madison 200 American 250 ad hoc steering committee, and so we have with us, Roz Kamah has joined us, and she's the Chair of the committee, and obviously there's a couple of different items on the agenda to talk about with this, so Roz, I will let you take over. I know there was a presentation you prepared, correct?
Yes, I mean, I can do it with the slides or without the slides, however, Jeannie feels comfortable. So, I'm excited to say that the excitement builds. We have locked down as a, a very diligent committee, a number of venues. What we will be doing tonight will ultimately be securing our ability to move forward, so we've developed this idea of the rising strawberry moon, which is a constant, and ultimately our legacy gift. It rose in 1641. It rose in 1776. It rose in June of 1826, and it will rise in 2026, and again, we hope 200 years later. So our local legacy becomes global, and our theme holds from before to beyond, so we are loving that everyone that we have conversation with commits to this. We've, the committee, all hardworking folks have mapped a work plan. We have several decisions tonight that we need from the Board of Selectmen and are put forth in this later agenda. We are ready to go out and ask for money. We're ready to start securing some contracts. And so, once we do that, then we will announce to the public, so our goal is by the time we get through the month of August, we'll start asking the town for not only their feedback, but also their commitment to volunteer. The programs that we have secured sort of continue on with what we presented last time. Henry Griggs, our town historian, has developed an important milestone event for Flag Day 2026, and we will do this at the Lee Academy. And we'll do so with a wonderful collection of antique flags and more pomp and circumstance will come with that. We hope you all will participate. The Surf Club has been secured. We're, again, we're not signing any contracts till we have a way to work with our funding. We are working on a music food festival to be followed over a course of a weekend preceding the 4th of July with the town fair, where our birthday party will ensue, and we'll be giving a chance for all to be engaged and also to celebrate the great volunteerism that we have in this community. Our America 250 activities include our traditional Independence Day parade and fireworks and concert, and we will help them to understand how to co-brand that with our town birthday and our country's anniversary. And we have the Daniel Hand Clay Club fully committed, both with their faculty and students, to create handbells, which we've been asked by the America 250, the Connecticut 250 Committee, so that each citizen can be equipped with a bell and ring it at 2:00 PM on July 4th, 2026, and this will be nationwide, so our high school students are creating commemorative clay bells. They've started their work plan and very excited. It's, it's just, you know, part of the wonderful camaraderie we're building over these events. There are many, many of our nonprofits who have committed and/or are being contacted now to create or filling out a year-long calendar. We have some fun things like a strawberry cake bake-off and discovering all our districts, and so many things. The historic societies are working on books, and the Lee Lectures will be aligned, and we'll, we'll issue that calendar at the end of next month, and we'll work with Madison and the PR town, um, PR department to start to notify the community of what will come. And, you know, we continue with a very succinct plan to tie to our four goals of community, our legacy, our history, looking backwards, but also looking forwards, and the ecology, our place of Madison, Connecticut. So I'm here today because we need to settle on our funding. We're going to ask the Board of Selectmen for seed money. You've asked us to put this together. We've put in a lot of good time, but it's now time to secure contracts. And we will ask you to agree, after having done our due diligence, we've met with the Madison Foundation to be the recipient of these funds, and after meeting with First Selectwoman Peggy Lyons and Stacy Noblitz from the Department of Finance, we will run all of our receipts through the town. So we're anxious, once we can get this due diligence in place to really start to secure all of this and start announcing and engaging our community, so I'm happy to answer any questions. Al is on our committee and has fully participated. Bruce, I don't think you were here for the last presentation, so I'm happy to answer any questions going forward.
One thing, just want to highlight the logo and just ensure the board is comfortable with the logo they picked. So there was a slide back, a while back. Has your committee voted on this?
No, our meeting is on Wednesday, so we are, if, and if you go to the first slide, we are, we're gonna try to either have, you know, a double logo depending on, on the festival, but we need to incorporate some of the town graphics into the logo when we haven't been able to finish that off yet, but that, that will show up on our swag, our banners, and we'll work with Madison on how that goes forward, but the idea of announcing that Madison, it's not just America, it's Madison celebrating its 200th anniversary.
Roz, just to pick up on that, has the committee considered taking, if, if there's a 250th logo, maybe attaching that to the back of the hat, sort of as a dual?
There is, there is a Connecticut logo that's been approved. It has a C T on it and, and a flag, and yeah, I mean, as we develop the swag, which we haven't done yet, you know, without funding, it's kind of hard to go forward, and we'll continue to update you. We're happy to bring all of that to you, but I have a feeling we'll have a number of items, the bells, you know, hats, t-shirts, flags, so on and so forth. We just, we're not quite there yet.
I like the general idea. It looked, looked great. Just maybe make Madison bigger, that's all.
Well, yeah, and again, it depends where it goes, right? And, and we may have variations on it, so what goes on a shirt may be different than what goes on a hat, and be different than what goes on a flag, so we'll, we'll present the graphics as we go forward.
Either they have kind of a calendar and a logo, like where we vote on September, you know, and we can kind of just endorse the project, you know, as things move forward. I think that would be good, when you're ready.
Yeah, the other thing we have to do now, you know, once we get these other pieces in place, we have a draft of a case statement to go ask for sponsorship. So although we're asking the Board of Selectmen for seed money to secure the venues and, um, you know, things that we need to put on a public event, we will go not only to the, the, the town, but the local commerce, Chamber of Commerce members will go to larger institutions that serve our community and ask for sponsorship, so hopefully we'd like to think maybe we'll end with a surplus in which we will identify a recipient for that, because at the end of this, you know, we do not carry on, so more to come on that. We just haven't tested it yet, not having the ability to know how to receive money.
Okay, I mean, maybe we can go to item 99 and then we can talk about that, the budget, because that's kind of the next one. Does that sound good?
Yes.
I'm going to move on to item 9, discuss and take action to approve and appropriation of up to $25,000 for expenses related to the Madison 200 America 250 ad hoc steering committee activities.
So moved.
Second. Okay, so the thinking here was, you know, they might need to put down money to like secure entertainment, also preorder swag, or whatever it is, you know, secure some things, some venues, some planning activities. This is creeping up very quickly, and it's also what it'd be, or a lot of the activities are going to be surrounding the busiest time across, you know, the country, so we want to be early out and make sure we get what we need. So we kind of, you know, thought 25 gives us some flexibility, and the idea would be as money donations come in, the town can get reimbursed for some of the expenses that we're outlawing now. Okay, so.
And I, I might add to that. Ryan Duquesne is our treasurer, and as soon as we know, you know, that it's not just a birthday cake on the green, we will create a budget, and, you know, with this kind of funding, we'll be able to now fulfill the, the plan that we've put in place.
Um, and so this has to go to Board of Finance as well, and I guess we're just on balance, we'll let them decide, but it's not coming from anything else. I think we talked about using contingency, but we have that, we, we need that contingency for other kind of operational things, and then the idea here is that we will be reimbursed for most of it, so. So any questions on that item? No? Okay, all in favor of approving item 99, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, so you got, you got some money now.
Thank you, thank you so much, real.
The town will be the one handling all the POs and all that stuff, so they're gonna make requests, and then you know, then we would approve any expenditures following our normal procurement policies. So item number 10, attempts to just add into that some of those approval processes for them, because we didn't really pay any charge. So item number 10 is discuss and take action to update the charge for the Madison 200 America 250 ad hoc steering committee. Second. And Roz, I know you, I apologize, I meant to get you this draft, and I thought I'd send it to you last week, and I hadn't. But we just basically looked at some other ones, you know, like a building committee kind of concept, and so, but anyway, so you've got my edits. Those are edits that we kind of pulled together some basic language, and one of the things too was, you know, we were thinking, you know, if there's extra money left over, or they're gonna kind of put their thinking caps on about a way to memorialize this whole 200th anniversary through some sort of thing. We don't know what it's gonna be yet. It could be a thing, it could be a book, it could be a monument, it could be, you know, paint. Whatever, yeah, yeah, mural.
Yeah, we have someone working on a mural, not yet secured, but yes, there will be, there will be legacy pieces.
The thought was some of this actually might come into money that the town would then dedicate to that element as well. And so, and that's where you see some of the language I think I added in there too about that, points under duties and responsibilities. So, but once again, it's still gonna follow, you know, Finance Director procurement approval process as we do for other committees that, you know, have funding kind of allocated to them, but they don't have the authority to actually just go spend it, right? They have to go through a process.
And we'll, we'll keep a budget, and as money comes in or money goes out, we certainly, those books will be available to the Board of Selectmen.
So, any questions on that? Nope? All right, great. With that, all in favor of approving the amendment to the steering committee, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, and then item number 11 is discuss and take action to approve the town of Madison entering to agreement with the Madison Foundation for the Madison 200 America 250 ad hoc steering committee and authorize the First Selectwoman to sign all documents associated with this. Second. Okay, and here you have a draft of this. This is based on what the Madison Foundation had sent to us. This is kind of a standard thing. We made some modifications. This is not going to council yet, so it might change a little bit, but it just shows you this is kind of how it works.
And Ryan and I had meetings with him, so they are excited and even willing to make a contribution, so it's a nice partnership.
Yeah, and by getting this set up, then she can start that, you know, reaching out to different.
Pay some money.
Those coming in, just to get all the infrastructure set up for that, so got a lot done in a short period of time, when you think about it, right?
The committee's working hard, thank you.
You know, if you have like, specific word changes, we're just authorizing this to be done, and then you can send in the word changes and stuff. Sure, it's not gonna change significantly. I just want to run it by.
I reviewed it, so it looks, there were some changes that had to be made, and Jeannie caught them for us, so thank you.
Okay, so I guess with that, then all in favor of approving the agreement, say aye.
Aye.
All right, good, so, um.
Thank you. I'm good to go.
Yes.
We'll get this. I'm gonna just run it by council and just talk, make sure, because it's, this is kind of different, because my thought was, what if you're really successful on fundraising? I just want to make sure we're not putting things in a precarious place, right, so.
Yeah, no, 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 we will, we will do that, and our next meeting is this Wednesday in the Town Hall. You're all welcome.
Okay, great. No, except very excited. It's nice to see all this coming together now, so thank you for all the things doing. All right.
Good to see you all.
So item number 12 is discuss and take action to adopt a resolution regarding the Connecticut Water Company Eastmans for Eighth Bridge Street, Madison, Connecticut.
So moved.
Second.
And so this has to do with the changing location of the water line at the Public Works Garage. I don't know if you need, it's just a form, a thing.
Yeah, it's all going, it's all going through town council.
Yeah.
Roz, look at the lines, make sure everything's right, you know, the intersecting lines and stuff like that.
This is the adjustment, so that we can then make improvements on the site?
So basically, it's in the north, northeast corner of the property, just like a 30-foot, right away, we had to give them to, so they could come up from the the waterway that actually runs underneath the railroad tracks, and then it comes up, and now it goes down Cops Road instead of going down New Brook Street. So now that whole debt made, it's underneath New Brook Street, it's all disconnected, so as soon as we estimate that, it's.
So that would allow us to make site changes without interference? That was a big thought. I mean, this is saving us hundreds of thousands of dollars at the end of doing.
Say that again?
Saving hundreds of thousands of dollars.
At least five hundred thousand.
Yeah, oh wow. It was gonna be crazy, and they saw benefits to this for themselves, and so they were able to put this into.
Yeah, they did give to the liquor program.
Yeah, yeah, and I want to just thank President Craig Catla, who's also a Madison resident, who's been raging with them in the school. So that helps us as we move forward on our conversations about the town project, so. Any further questions on that? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, item 12 passes. Good to get that done finally. Item number 13, discuss and take action to accept a guaranteed maximum price proposal from pantlum construction to construct the Emergency Operations Center addition at Madison Post Company. We wanted to authorize the First Selectwoman to sign all documents associated with this proposal.
So moved.
Second. Okay, so this is obviously with the EOC Firehouse project, and we had, we knew, because we knew we had a funding issue, we didn't make a a whole contract commitment to, we wanted to kind of stage it out to make sure we knew where we were gonna end up. Now that we have a lot of funding, we want to kind of go to the next phase. You got a memo on your packet, so I'll just leave it to these guys if you have questions, or.
Are all the guys in the park?
Yeah, I know.
Just having this side, yeah.
Yeah, so I mean, I was looking forward, and as planned originally, you know, normally you probably would have worn the whole thing, because you have a lot of funding, but we knew we were gonna be a bunch of public debtors and budgets, so we scaled a little bit.
Thanks.
Anything else to know?
No, it's, really what we're doing now is we're executing what's called a GMP amendment. So right now, we're, we're working under a master contract. We've issued purchase orders pre-construction, and after about, we've got, it's about a year now. We're actually at the point with a, with a hard and fast proposal. It does have a 3.9% contingency built into that number already, so it gives us a little bit of wiggle room there, because as we know, stuff happens. But no, we're, we're ready to go. We can execute this arrangement, and we will basically start construction in probably September. They're gonna pull the foundation permit first. We're gonna be going back to planning and zoning at ACA for a couple of exterior tweaks, probably next month, but they're, they're ready to start. Excited.
Right, very excited.
And I always had that number though, like 6%, 7% of contingency.
Yeah.
3.9 you're good with?
Oh, I'm never good with any contingency number. I always want to hire, but it, it, this situation is good, because we've been up and down this project now for months, and you know, we have looked at every element of a rather simple building in a hundred different ways.
A box.
Yeah, and one thing that, that's really helping out from the, from the risk perspective is what we're doing now in terms of the foundation structure. So we're no longer excavating an area with notoriously high water table. It's sketchy soils going on. We're using what's called a displacement pile system. There's 92 of them going in. There are essentially big screws that go on the ground, so a lot of those factors are being mitigated with what is now upfront, a more expensive cost, but eliminates all the risk that we know, once we get into that, we're gonna have to do de-watering, but you don't know how much.
Right.
So we were able to take a lot of those initial allowances and now whittle them down into actual prices, so Mungar is actually, is already gone out and bid this with all their subcontractors as well, so that's a real number. That's not like a budget number. That, that is the.
The fair assumption.
Yeah, so to have that 4% built into that is really a good thing at this point.
Awesome.
Yeah, with the way the new system is really, deepest excavation is about 20 inches with the foundation, except for the bottom.
Do you guys want to speak it, Mike? On the floor, sir?
No.
I have one request.
I don't want to go on these, so I don't want to.
I think, I think Bruce might have a question.
Yeah, I do, actually, it's, it's. As you go through the facade tweaks and interface with ACA, to the extent that the changes are budget neutral, you know, that's fine, but if a request comes along that eats into the contingency or otherwise increases the budget, if we could be made aware of that as it happens, I, this is a, a sensitive budget. I mean, we have already increased it. I would not want us to increase it again for cosmetic reasons.
Yeah, so you couldn't see me nodding my head from up there. Yeah, so the, the tweaks with ACA are actually not to the facade. The facade is remaining as is. They're on the back and side of the building, which you can make an argument, it's technically out of their purview anyway, but it is a material, a change in building material, which is why we're gonna run it by them again, but absolutely, the, the, the reason why those tweaks are being done was actually to save money, to get the GMP down to what we could stomach. So really, there is no hope of going back. We, we will ask for their opinion and advice on these certain elements. We actually have an idea that might save some additional costs, which we'll run by them, that we're not locked into, but we are definitely not interested in doing anything that's gonna, that's gonna eat into the contingency, like you said, for our cosmetic reasons at this point. The facade, which is their purview, is exactly the same as, as was approved by them.
Okay.
Great. Okay, okay. All right, great. Any, no further questions? With that, then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So we'll move that on to the next phase. Move forward.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, item number 14. Item number 14, discuss and take action to approve a recommendation from the ad hoc new school building committee to approve an amendment to the Colliers owners representative services agreement for additional services, not to exceed $130,000, and to authorize the First Selectwoman to sign all documents associated with this amendment funded in that River Elementary School budget.
Is Graham joining us?
Yes, I need it.
So moved.
Okay, great, and I think Graham, who's the Chair, was going to talk about this. Basically, this is, you know, Colliers, we had a contract with them. Obviously, they've done a fantastic job on this project, absolutely, but there has been some twists and turns of it as it's gone through the process the last two years. And so, the committee felt that they, it was warranted to increase, you know, to make them whole for that, outside of the fixed price contract, so Graham, if you want to talk a little bit more about that?
Yeah, just to give you a little background, as, as most people know, we, the, the school, the building got a certificate of occupancy, and the school's moving in right now, and there'll be a, you know, I think a ribbon cutting type ceremony sometime in August, and I think we're coming back, we're scheduled to appear before the Board of Selectmen and give kind of a overall update on exactly, you know, where we are with the budget and how much money we're gonna be returning to you, but.
August, with all the numbers for the.
Yeah, we're, we're doing some additional asbestos testing in Ryerson School right now, just to cut a better number on that. But that, that, we'll, we'll get you that information by the 25th, but I just wanted to kind of a quote, quote unquote paperwork exercise. When Collier was hired, it was like an hourly contract with a budget that was set up two and a half years ago. It was actually set up before the building committee was even formed. As we went through the process, there was some, as Peggy says, there's some twists and turns, including, and early, because of the COVID and all the supply chain problems, we had to do an early package and pre-purchased a lot of equipment, so there was another phase with, with the state, and there was also this decision to pursue additional money of reimbursement from the state, which, which was able to be obtained of $5 million. It doesn't help the referendum, but it definitely helps the town's taxing needs, you know, and also there's the IRA grant we're pursuing, so there's been, there's been a lot of tasks, and I will say Adam has been exceptional. I'm sure you've all seen Adam in action, and he was a big part of the success of the project. As, as good as the building committee may or may have not have been, Adam was a huge part of the project being on schedule and on budget or under budget, so just, I just want to kind of lay that out there, so. So just, I just want to kind of lay that out there, so.
And I think the amount you have in here is not going to have an impact on any money that had been earmarked for the Ryerson demolition, correct?
Yeah, that was, that, we've, we've known this was going to be a, you know, a need for like three or four months at least, so we've been tracking that money separately. So this does not affect the contingency that we've been talking about returning to the town.
Yeah. Okay.
And will this be sort of the end of the project adjustments to the budget? Or, or do you see any more coming?
Um, I mean, there's always a few closeout change order type stuff, but we, we're tracking that pretty conservatively. So it's, it appears it's a pretty safe bet that we'll be returning $1 to $2 million. The final numbers, you know, will be determined, you know, as the last closeout type stuff. But we'll definitely be returning a substantial sum of money to the town. And this was, this is, and this takes us to the closeout. As, you know, as Peggy and Stacy will tell you, there's the closeout process. The building opens, everyone thinks you're done, but there's a ton of backend stuff to make sure we get reimbursed all the money we spent in closeout. We're, even though it appears to be done, we've only spent 90% of the construction budget. You know what I mean? So there's always a lot of paperwork, and we'll still be, I told the building committee, we'll, we'll be still meeting for a year, so don't make travel plans anytime soon. But I don't think, this definitely won't, we won't, I don't believe we'll ask for any more money from the town, or for Colliers.
And, and just to highlight also, that doesn't include the potentially $2 million that we hope to get back for the IRA tax credits. We're going through the process right now, doing that application. And I think we're going to fit with the criteria of the, I don't know, it's a big people bill or what we want to call it, that was passed by Congress. We make those deadlines, fortunately, with, with the school's opening, so we can apply. And they're going through that process right now, so that doesn't go into their budget per se. But just to note that that's another, you know, we got $900,000 last month for the geothermal project here, reimbursed to us from the IRS, and then we can expect hopefully, you know, it probably would, you know, by the time it goes through the whole process, it wouldn't be till next, you know, the end of the year or early next year, we would be getting another up to $2,000, right, for that? So, so that's all good news too. So more than covers the expected increase in the owner's revenues. Any, any additional questions on this?
Yep.
Okay. Did you have a question?
No.
Okay, great, all right, great, well, thank you very much for all your hard work. I can't wait to do, go to the ribbon cutting, I know we're excited about that. I know, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All right, great, thank you.
Thank you, everyone, take care.
Okay. Um.
Take care, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, let's see, item number 15, discuss and take action to adopt a beach and recreation department policy and memorial bench donations.
So moved.
Second. We're like twins. So item number 15 is basically, Austin is on vacation, but this is the same policy. And all we did is just remove the tree piece, because we, that got a little, you know, we have to have a lot more conversations about that, it didn't look fit. So this is just about the benches. And so that was pretty much the same agreement, except we took away, we took out all the tree references to it. And so if the board is comfortable with the policy he's recommending, would the tree references are still in here?
I was going to say, the tree reference is still in the.
It's not, but it's in the text.
You sure it's not a newer version?
Mine didn't give me that. Jeannie, did we send the right version around?
Pretty sure I did, I will double check.
Because he told me he went through and made the changes, I didn't, he just said he took all the references to the trees out. All right, let's table this, we'll come back with the one with the trees removed.
I, I saw it on the title, but I didn't.
Yeah, it's not in the title, but then you didn't have purpose, Memorial Bench and Tree Donation Program is.
I would think he was trying to get out of town soon, so, that's okay.
Yeah, I just threw it on there to check the box, I thought he told me he amended the entire document.
Would just approve it with removal of the trees?
Yeah, can we approve it with the provision, that it be removed?
Yeah, all right, remove it with, amending it to approve the policy with removal of references to trees. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Good, all right, good, moving on to citizens' comments, any hands raised? And I want to just make a comment that we're going to be going to executive session, and there won't be any voting or any conversation after we come out of the executive session. So the webinar will be locked once you go into executive session. So this is the last chance for citizens' comments.
Ben, you want to talk about it?
Ah, no, I'm all. I'll see you guys.
All right.
See you.
So with that, then, I would like to actually move, make a motion to move it into executive session and to invite in our labor attorney, Gabe Gerard, Stacy Nobitz, our finance director. I don't think Deb could be here tonight, I don't think.
No, Jack's on.
She is, Deb?
Jack, Jack is on.
Yeah, no, Jack, also invite Jack Drum, but I think Deb had a medical thing today, so she couldn't attend to these, that front end. And then also, we have the Chair of the Board of Peace Commissioners, Ed Dowling, will be joining us as well. So with that, can I get a motion?
Second.
Okay, and with that.
I don't see Ed Dowling on.
He's in the room.
Under the chair.
You're out of sight.
Okay.
Hey, you grabbed that door.
All right, and with that, then, favor moving into executive session, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, great, take this back out.
You're good.
All right, well, with that, then, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
So moved.
All in favor, say aye. All right, all right, buddy, bye-bye.
Bye.
Good night, everybody.